Welcome to this meeting at the Carroll County Democratic Club. I'm Mark Olson, the club's president. Tonight, instead of a normal meeting, we are presenting this special school board forum. And the only thing I want to say is that our next meeting will be Monday, April 1st. And I speak with Bill Echols, who will talk about career and technology opportunities in Carroll County. And now, I would like to introduce Gary Foot. Gary Foot is a member of the Democratic Club and the Democratic Central Committee. He's been a resident of Westminster and a teacher at South Carroll High School since 1991. His children are all graduates of Westminster High School, and he has an interest in school board policies for a long time, or he has, I should say. Mr. Foot will introduce our moderator for tonight.
So I want to thank all the candidates who are agreed to come, and certainly thanks to the audience. And we are absolutely pleased to have Charles Harrison as our moderator for tonight. Mr. Harrison has a distinguished career with the military, with law enforcement, also with education. He's been a member of the Carroll County community since 1977. He knows more about running these candidate forums than certainly I do, and I'm just absolutely thrilled to have the opportunity to let him take over the evening for tonight. So thank you, Charles, and let's get started.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Carroll County Board of Education Forum. This forum, sponsored by the Carroll County Democratic Club, is being broadcast on Facebook Live, and also it's going to be rebroadcast at the Community Media Center, so please check your website for the Carroll County Media Center for rebroadcasting of this event. The goal is to provide an equal forum for advocacy and provide citizens with information about the individuals seeking positions on this board. This forum is not affiliated with the Carroll County Democratic Central Committee. Again, my name is Charles Harrison, and I'm serving as your moderator for this evening, and I will introduce each candidate as we proceed. We have Ms. Murray Dupin. We have Dr. Amanda Jiskowski. We have Dr. Gregory Malvoe. Is that pronounced correctly?
I just go with Greg. Usually, that's fine. But that's correctly, Malvoe.
Well, I don't want to distinguish you from the other honor of the state council account, so we'll stick with Dr. Malvoe. Is that agreeable?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, and we have Ms. Kristen Zimmer.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Each candidate will have three minutes for the opening statement. Opening statements will be followed by a question and answer session. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Each will have the opportunity to respond to the same question. A timekeeper will hold up a yellow card with 30 minutes left, and a red card with time to expire. Candidates will be allowed to finish sentences and end the answers to their questions. There will be no debate. This is an informational forum only. We recognize that this forum is so extremely critical to the future of our school board, and I ask that we provide just adherence to this occasion of its importance. At the end of each, candidate will have two minutes to make final comments. We are asking that everyone turn off their cell phones, and the audience refrain from applause or doing anything to express support or opposition to any candidate during this forum. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
All right, then let's begin. Opening statements, let's start with Ms. Murray Dupin.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much to the Carroll County Democratic Club for organizing this forum, to the Community Media Center for its operational support, to Exploration Commons for this amazing space, and to Mr. Charles Harrison for moderating this evening. My name is Muri Lynn Dupin. Twenty years ago, my husband Patrick and I chose Carroll County, specifically Mount Airy, to raise our two children, largely because of the excellent schools, but also the pastoral beauty of this wonderful agricultural community. My daughter and son are grown now, having attended CCPS from kindergarten through their 12th grade graduations. That is very different than how I grew up. I was born in Wyoming, where my father was an all-American college football player. When a pro career didn't materialize, he enlisted in the Navy. We moved often, which meant I attended eight different schools in places as far apart and different as Scotland and San Diego. After landing in Virginia during high school, I graduated from the College of William and Mary with a bachelor degree in biology, a subject dictated by my lifelong passion for wildlife conservation. I worked summers in college and then several years afterwards at a small private petting zoo, in roles ranging from cashier to general manager, with the bulk of that time as an environmental educator, doing presentations with a monkey, parrot, and snake on the tropical rainforest one day, and facilitating hands-on encounters with farm animals the next. I then pivoted to scientific nonprofit marketing and membership management, and am now thrilled to be in a position that brings everything together in my role as the corporate relations officer on the philanthropy team at the National Aquarium in Baltimore. There were also many years that I was a stay-at-home mom. It was during one of those stretches that I became aware of budgetary and other challenges facing our schools, and threw myself into advocacy, speaking at board of education meetings and commissioner budget hearings, among several other activities, making the case over and over about how important it is to value and empower our wonderful educators in service to students. It was an incredible honor to receive the Friend of Education Award from the Carroll County Education Association last year, and to receive their endorsement this year, along with that of the Carroll Association of School Employees, as a candidate in this election. Also endorsed by those groups is fellow candidate Dr. Amanda Jiskowski. She and I have teamed up forming a joint campaign entity called the Slate for Student Success. While we have different backgrounds and skills, we share a vision for our schools and community that ensures every student in Carroll has welcoming access to a high-quality public education. I'm excited about the opportunity to talk about my ideas and qualifications, and in the coming months, hope to talk to as many constituents as possible and earn your vote in the general election this fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Amanda Jiskowski, and I'm here with you this evening as a candidate for the Carroll County School Board, with the vote in November. Fueled by over a decade of experience in education, a deep understanding of the challenges facing our schools, and a commitment to the well-being of our community, I'm excited to be a candidate once again for this position. As an associate professor at Towson University, my alma mater, a graduate program director, and a devoted occupational therapist, I've dedicated my career to enhancing the quality of life and education for all. My work spans from engaging students in critical thinking to developing curriculum and advocating for neurodivergent students and their families. But beyond my professional life, I'm a mother of three, two who are school-aged living in Eldersburg, and I'm deeply invested in the future of our schools and our children. My campaign is built on the foundation of hundreds of active volunteers, which signals a collective readiness for change here in Carroll County. We've kick-started this journey with the support of local educators and school employee organizations and community leaders, who share my belief that we must move beyond extremism and divisiveness toward a system where every voice is heard and every student thrives. I'm driven by the conviction that our educators and students are the backbones of our schools. I envision a board that not only values their contributions, but actively works to enhance their experiences through meaningful community engagement and dialogue. Our schools face numerous challenges today, from navigating health policies to ensuring instructional excellence and addressing student behaviors. My experience across various educational and therapeutic venues equips me to leave with insight and bring fresh perspective to address these issues head-on. Why do I want to run? Because I've seen decisions that don't serve all our children or represent our diverse community's interests. As a resident of South County, I understand the unique needs of our rapidly developing areas and the importance of having representation that truly reflects our community's diversity. I have a proven track record of leadership and service, and think I bring a unique and informed perspective to a body that is in need of those qualities. My campaign is also about laying the groundwork for the future of our schools during a time of great change and disruption. We must prioritize the mental and physical health of our students, grow and model a culture of belonging, and ensure that our educators have the support they need to inspire the next generation. I will work to strengthen our school system and refocus on its mission: to prepare students to be globally competitive, address the needs of individual students, maintain an effective workforce, and ensure students are educated in safe and orderly environments. My goal, along with my slate mate Muri Dupin, is to demonstrate collaboration, listening, and acting with competence and caring for the good of our schools and our community. I look forward to tonight's conversation and to continuing it with you in the months ahead of the election in November.
Thank you. Dr. Malvoe.
First off, I want to thank the Carroll County Democratic Club and the Community Center, Meeting Center, for creating and supporting this forum. Hello, audience members as well. I am Dr. Greg Malvoe. I'm a lifelong resident of Maryland. I've been an educator for 25 years. I have a PhD in education and administration. Among the main subjects of reading, writing, and math, I teach two out of the three with reading and writing. I'm the proud parent of a middle school student in the Carroll County Public School System, and being the parent of a child with special needs, I'm well-informed with the use of student IEPs, resources for students with learning disabilities, and special education offerings. I'm also an administrator, the college-wide coordinator of study abroad in international education at Montgomery College, serving an institution of 60,000 students. I'm also the co-chairperson of the Maryland Community College International Education Consortium. I have a good deal of experience managing program budgets. I enjoy actively volunteering in Carroll County, and I'm a member of the PTO, or Parent-Teacher Organization, for one of our middle schools, and also I'm an active volunteer for the local Boy Scouts troop. If I'm elected to the Board of Education, I plan to keep our schools number one in the state with academics, safety, and giving our students the best pathways for future success in a trade, to go to college, or to enter the workforce right out of high school. Even though I don't want to make major changes to our school system, still I want to strengthen what we have. There needs to be clear focus on traditional curriculum, math, reading, and writing, as well as the arts. I want our students to have the same quality of education that we had and that our parents had. I will support a learning environment that makes our students independent thinkers. In school, students should not be told what to think, but rather be taught how to think and critically. I bring strong support to our teachers, from one educator to another. I understand the challenges that you face with class disruptions, the desire to earn a fair salary, to have a manageable class size, and much more. I know that the students excel most when parents are actively involved in their school activities. Therefore, I believe that parents should be consulted when it comes to academic, social, and medical decisions for their children. Also, why shouldn't we hire out electricians, plumbers, construction workers out of state -- or I'm sorry, out of county and out of state? We need to support our homegrown talent, and I want our schools to have the foundation they need to learn with important trades to enter the job market. In closing, I am truly excited to share with you today my priorities and values to keep our schools the very best in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zimmer?
Good evening. My name is Kristen Zimmer, and I too would like to thank the Democratic Club for hosting us here this evening, as well as you, Mr. Harrison, for moderating, and always a huge thank you to Carroll County Public Libraries. Exploration Commons is truly beautiful, and I'm so happy we're able to meet here today. For those of you who do not know me, I'd like to introduce myself. First and foremost, I'm the mother of two children who both attend Carroll County Public Schools. I'm a lifelong, fifth-generation Carroll County resident who grew up right around the block from here on West Green Street. I'm the owner of a thriving small business and have over 15 years of business practices and ownership that have sharpened my skills in understanding how to set and manage budgets, how to meet financial regulatory obligations, manage strategic goals, and how to make tough decisions regarding allocation of resources. I'm also a proud community member and have served on a myriad of local boards. I am currently the president of the Board of Directors for the Senior Provider Information Network, and I'm currently serving on committees for Bridging Light's Taste of Carroll, as well as on a committee for the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll County. In recent years, I sat on the Executive Board for Habitat for Humanity of Carroll County, sat on the Carroll County Youth Service Bureau's Philanthropy Committee, and was a chairperson for the 2020 Alzheimer's Association Longest Day Westminster Walk. In the last three years since my oldest has started kindergarten, I have been very active in my children's school, Cranberry Station, where I currently serve as PTA president, and the Carroll County Public School System in general, where I currently serve on the Curriculum Council. While helping at my children's school, I have had the opportunity to have an up-close-and-personal perspective of the tremendous accomplishments and challenges of our students and dedicated educators. I believe that strong and wise-led leadership, coupled with a commitment to building partnerships and respecting community values, can effectively address the challenges while encouraging and rewarding the accomplishments. I believe that our public schools should be laser-focused on academic achievement. Such commitment to academic excellence both provides students with the foundation they need to succeed in their future endeavors and produces prepared, effective, informed citizens, and ultimately, the future leaders of our society. Thank you.
Thank you all for those comments. Questions that are being addressed this evening have been submitted to the Carroll County Democratic Club in advance, and also the studio audience will have an opportunity to submit questions for our candidates. Okay, so that being said, let us begin, and we'll start with Ms. Dupin. What do you see as the greatest strength of our school system currently, and what are our greatest challenges?
Great question, and I'd like to go first. As far as some of the greatest strengths, I really do believe that there are many. There's the strength of the educators themselves, always is at the heart of any good school system. Without that, you cannot have a good school or a good school system. The community, we have an amazing community with engaged families and community programs, even when people maybe don't have kids in the system, like I don't anymore. We have a wonderful community that's engaged in how our schools are the center of our communities. We have a community, I think, that knows that good, strong schools also mean safe communities, thriving communities, as those students grow and learn and put what they learn to use out in the world once they graduate. We have many other things that are going right and going well with our school system we have for a really long time. Like I said, it's part of why our family moved here. As far as the challenges, there are many, obviously. We have had financial challenges for many years now, budgetary issues with the ability to compensate educators adequately and competitively. That's been an ongoing issue. I think there's a glimmer of hope in that regard, and so my fingers are crossed for how things might turn out with that this year in the commissioner's budget decisions. I think there are other challenges, too. We are still in the aftermath of a pandemic that really disrupted so many things in so many ways, and there's a lot of ground to make up from that. We have the Blueprint, which is just a complex, huge reform that is creating the need for a lot of creative thinking and collaboration, and I would say that with my time almost up, that's pretty much where I'll leave her right there.
Thank you. Dr. Jiskowski?
Thank you. Well, Muri said a lot of the things that I certainly would have said as well, but I'll piggyback a little bit. I too moved to the area because of the strength of the schools and the opportunities that have occurred for my family. We have so many wonderful educators and school staff that truly care about our kids. We have excellent after-school and sports programs, and lots of different opportunities for community members to get involved. I really appreciate the structure of the leadership and committee representation, where parents and families can have a say in just kind of shared governance related to curriculum and many of the other issues that are addressed in the schools. And just being able to be present in the school system is not something that's available post-pandemic in many other school systems, and so that's something that I deeply value and certainly take advantage of with my time in the schools. So certainly, the engaged families and community partners, as Muri was discussing, are a major strength. Many challenges, of course, as well. You spoke of several of them related to the budget, implementation of the Blueprint. I do think with the impetus of the Blueprint kind of pushing us toward raising educator salaries and making sure that we are providing sufficient facilities, and really focused on preparing for career and college readiness, those are all great things, and so it's just going to be working out the kinks of how do we do this in a way that makes sense for our community, and also within the structure and guidelines that are set forth, understanding that that structure is going to be changing quite a bit. I also think that general mental health and physical safety of students and staff is of critical importance right now. We're hearing more and more about challenging behaviors in the classroom, students that have experienced deep trauma, and educators that are feeling unheard about their own experiences in the classroom, and that's something that I certainly would like to address.
Thank you. Dr. Malvoe?
So I'm going to go three for three here, and I too moved from another county to come to the school system here, which is the best that we have in the state. So what we do well, our strengths are many, just a few though, is that -- and try not to repeat some of these -- we spend less per student than any other county. We tend to spend about $15,000 on average per student. Others are up to about $21,000, whether that's Somerset or Baltimore City. And though we spend less, our students are at the top in terms of test scores and the MCAPs. So this is a real tribute to our teachers and our staff members. We have less issues with teacher-staff vacancies to fill as well. We've had just eight vacancies in two years, right? Or I'm sorry, we had just eight vacancies two years ago and had over 20 this past year due to the good work of the current Board of Education that added 123 new positions with the $11 million that the new Blueprint funded. Yet, our neighboring counties have hundreds of vacancies to fill. We have the best benefits. We have highly engaged parents and a great system that supports our educators. We have -- or we even have a fraction, a fraction of the classroom management issues that other counties have, so we do a great job in terms of safety. At the same time, we do have a couple problems. Our county went from less than 2% to now 6% of uncertified staff in just a year. We're hiring more folks than we would normally hire because the state cannot create enough new teachers from the job pool. So we are forced to seek new hires outside of our state to meet the Blueprint mandates and to keep our classes a smaller size.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
Yes, thank you. I love the question, what are -- what is our greatest strengths, because there are so many. I think first and foremost that our teachers are Carroll County Public Schools' greatest strength. We have -- my family personally has just experienced outstanding teaching, teachers who are communicative and who speak to us and engage with us. Another strength is that we are actually in Carroll County, which is a county that has a tremendous amount of nonprofits available to the school system to support our families. And then finally, I would say that it's our parent groups and parental involvement when it comes to different things within the school, including birthday books, giving books to every single elementary student on their birthdays, book fairs, holiday shops, parents being in the schools and supporting the students. As far as our challenges are concerned, I think the number-one challenge is the erosion of local governance by the state of Maryland. Year after year, we are losing the autonomy to be able to do what is best for Carroll County. Implementing Blueprint is going to be a tremendous lift. We have lost the ability to spend our budget where Carroll County feels like those dollars deserve to go. Like I said, it's going to be a tremendous lift, so losing that ability is tremendous.
Thank you. In the interest of fairness, we're going to rotate the -- who answers each question first. Okay, that being said, let's start with Dr. Jiskowski.
Do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. How will you work to restore public trust in our schools and in our school board here in Carroll County?
Well, that's a great question, and I think it's incredibly important. I, as a program director at Towson University, I oversee a graduate program within my department, and so I serve on the executive leadership team, and one of my jobs is to really help facilitate communication among the leadership, but then between the leaders and our students and other units on campus, as well as reporting up to the presidents and so forth. So I think having just that background is helpful, and understanding the different roles that folks play and the strengths that they have is very useful. But I think a lot of it comes down to modeling, and to just, you know, even in the course of the campaign, making sure that we are maintaining ethical practices, that we are being respectful in our conversation, that we are encouraging our supporters to do the same, and that we are holding to account those in leadership to make sure that they are as well, that they're not engaging in practices that are questionable or highly partisan. So that's one thing. I think also just being responsive. I have personally reached out to a number of our elected officials on many occasions and very rarely get a response, which is disappointing. It's something that I would hope to be able to have an audience with the officials that I took part to elect, and I think that that's something that -- something like a school board, which is a hyper-local office, it's really important to have responsiveness and to have people feel like their voices are heard, and not that decisions are made before folks come to the table and have the meeting. So those are the things that I would do, and I think it really comes down to modeling as much as possible.
Thank you. Dr. Malvoe?
I think the recent actions of our board has helped to gain the public's trust, or regain that trust. This includes providing important parental rights and protections. I think we need to let our parents know that they can trust us in what we're doing and what our schools are doing, and making them an important part of the decision-making process. I think that restores trust and the protection of our children. I support opt-out options for curriculum. That parents may deem too mature for their children, that restores trust, particularly with topics related to family life and sexual education. We need to honor the relationship between parent and child and respect the parent's determination whether that child is mentally and emotionally prepared to take on these subjects. That restores trust. I've always encouraged communication between parents, staff, and students. The parent, more than anyone, should be relied upon to determine what is best for the well-being of their own child. The parent-child communication and bond should not be superseded by schools. That restores trust.
Thank you.
I commit to a policy of openness, accessibility, and, most important, transparency, with a general focus on subjects of educational success, school safety, strengthening partnerships, and academic excellence. I believe that if we keep the focus, a laser focus, on excellence and educational success, that is how we restore trust. And finally, I do not believe that Facebook should be used as a platform for school board members to discuss policy. I think that, too, will help in restoring trust.
Great. Thank you. Let's continue to move down the lines. Dr. Malvoe, your question?
Ms. Dupin.
Oh, yeah? Oh, okay.
Thank you very much. One of the things that I would do to restore trust is to be a vocal proponent for public education and opponent of the culture wars being played out in classrooms, and a passionate advocate for returning our focus to student success. I would strive to show that there should be no doubt about my commitment to every single student and family in our community. I would reject divisiveness and celebrate our community's shared values and what unites us. To expand on that a little bit, Amanda referenced modeling responsible, respectful, and responsive leadership, and so responsible, respectful, and responsive leadership, and so that is really important to me as well. Addressing divisiveness and then moving towards inclusivity is really important. Empowering and supporting educators increase trust in the system. When our educators are undermined, when they are not empowered to teach and do their best and to be excellent, then that undermines faith in the, in the school system. And finally, the other thing that I want to bring is, I told about some of my background at the beginning, about my, my time as an environmental experiential educator, moving around a lot. Schools were so important to me. I was a great student. I loved school. We need to bring the sense of community and joy back to learning, to the classroom, and to when we gather as a community in and around our schools.
Thank you. Next question will be for Dr. Malbo. What will you do to maintain an effective working relationship between the school board, our county commissioners, and our state delegates?
Well, fortunately, I've met a good deal of those commissioners and state delegates and have a good rapport with a number of them. Commissioner Kenny Kyler, for one, and others as well, different delegates, but without having to mention all those names and so forth. Again, I think that we, with the Board of Education, need to make sure that we're looking at policy that works with our commissioners and tries to make their jobs easy in terms of partnerships, help them out as they help us as well. I think that we have to make sure that we look at our, you know, different individuals in terms of parents and stakeholders and teachers and get their, their thoughts. I've interviewed a lot of teachers, students, and so forth to, to understand what really needs to be done even before it goes to the board or even with the commissioners and so forth.
Thank you. Same question to Zimmer.
Thank you. One of my campaign pillars is strengthening partnerships and having a strong relationship with the county commissioners and with the local delegation. The current school board right now has an unprecedented relationship with the commissioners, and they are working hand-in-hand very effectively to get things done. And that actually goes for the local delegation as well. I am all about partnering in, to get things done in the most effective way possible. So, I'm excited to have those relationships and to work closely with those commissioners and with our delegation. I know all of them very well, and I'm excited to strengthen those relationships.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. So, a couple of things about that. So obviously, there is our local Carroll County commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, and the relationships there are very important. I've had a chance to meet many of the commissioners over the years and have had either very good relationships or at least collegial relationships, and that's what you need as a start for building a foundation for cooperation. The state delegates, I have reached out to talk with them even now as a candidate, just to hear their perspective. Some have responded, some have not. But I'm confident, even if they haven't been informed to me so far, that they are professionals who know that whoever is elected, they are going to want to have good relationships with for the betterment of our community. And I would like to call out that the need for good relationships goes beyond just who is elected to represent Carroll County. Our school system is a state system. We do not and will never have a hundred percent local control. So we do need to have cooperative, collaborative, and not combative relationships with elected officials across the state at several levels, at the State Board of Education, which obviously is not elected, but of the, the state legislature as a whole, the governor, and various other people in the state of Maryland that are in a position to be supportive and listen to what the needs of Carroll County are. In fact, I would argue that at the state level, we would do more to not be so at odds with the legislators who vote on things that impact us. And so that's just a point that I would make there. I would also say too, that again, we have to have elected people on the Board of Education that are definitely interested in, in supporting every family in the community. And so I know that there are a lot of relationships that exist already among the current power structure, but I think that we're gonna need some outsiders to balance that out, to serve everybody.
Thank you. Doc Schuch.
Yes. So, as Mary said, we have had many meetings and also attended meetings with our local elected officials as well as current and former board members, and we are working actively to develop those relationships. You know, I think that those relationships are so important because as the wise Dr. Dorsey likes to frequently remind us, the job of the Board of Education is not to determine the budget, of course. It's to help really clearly identify what the needs of the system are and to demonstrate those for our elected officials and to really help them prioritize spending and budget decisions and develop some sort of a shared understanding. And so, those of us who have a deep knowledge of the workings of the system and the on-the-ground daily life of families with children in the system can articulate that quite well. And I think that that is a powerful tool for working with our elected officials. I agree with Mary when she talks about trying to avoid a combative approach with our delegation and up several different levels. I think that instead we should be working to seek shared understanding and flexibility. If we're banging our head against the wall and saying, "No, we won't do it," it's just not going to be particularly helpful to us. And in fact, there are some mechanisms built into the blueprint that if we don't meet some of the goals, that we will lose funding. And that is bad for the entire system. So we certainly want to work to avoid those types of challenges and really do the best we can to build those relationships and articulate as clearly as possible what we need here in Carroll County.
Thank you. Ideal transition. Next question for Mrs. Zimmer. What opportunities do you see arising from the blueprint for Maryland's future? And what challenges does this legislation present to Carroll County?
So to start first with the opportunities, if I got that right. So I think that there's many, I think there, I support many of the goals of blueprint, including dual high school and college enrollment and credits, extra resources for compensatory education, a partnership with workforce development and career counselors, and higher standards for teachers with a merit-based career ladder. So, I, I think there's a lot of desirable things in the blueprint. But what my concern, my concerns are not with the desirability, but rather with its cost, inflexibility, and again, lack of local control. Carroll County consistently has excellent results. We score top of the state almost all of the time, and I believe that we have earned the right to make decisions with our own budget and with our own funding mechanisms. So that's where I see the concerns lie.
Thank you. Let's do it.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Zimmer brought up many of the things. She, she listed those pillars of what the blueprint is intended to accomplish. The career and technical education, helping to make sure that the students are college and/or career-ready when they graduate, addressing the need for what is done at the pre-K level, those transitions into K through 12 and out of K through 12 to help ensure that there is an opportunity for success for every student in the system. It's landmark legislation that has a lot of promise. It is huge and unwieldy and complicated and not funded sufficiently. And so all of those things may, do make it difficult on the local LEAs, the local systems. And I, that's being recognized, the collective voices of all of the different systems saying, "Wow, this is big." I will note, reform is never easy. Doing something that's a major change is never easy. This stuff is tough. And that's why collaboration is so important, flexibility, creativity. And I do also want to mention that one of the key things that's built into the blueprint is the compensation and recognition of educators, the role that educators play, the professionalism that is afforded to the, to the position. Because one of the things that I want to say is, one of the things I am is a super fan of educators. I'm basically a fangirl of teachers. I know how hard it is. Some of that comes from the fact that one of my dearest friends in the world is an ESAL teacher in Northern Virginia, and I just have heard so much about what it's really like. And I honestly, if you're not an educator and you, and unless you know one and you're hearing those stories, you just don't know what's really happening. And so, lifting up our educators is central. I'm also a big, huge proponent that this reform, as well as decisions that are made at the school system level, the voice of that classroom leader needs to be so much stronger in all of these decisions because they know better than anybody else. Blueprint gives that chance, but it's not easy. That's part of the challenge. A lot of people are upset about some things about it, or they don't fully understand. And so I am hopeful though that this can be accomplished if everybody rolls up their sleeves.
Thank you. Doc Schuch.
All right. So a number of the pillars have already been mentioned, and I don't think anybody up here disagrees that they are, these are not good things that we should work toward. The question is, how do we get there, right? And so as you've heard, there is some flexibility that's being baked in, and there are multiple pieces of legislation right now that are being discussed at the state level for modifications. And that includes everything as far as budget, timeline, roles, other, hiring of other folks to help support this process. But it is a process, as Mary was discussing. I wanted to highlight a couple other pieces. One would be the college and career readiness component. I think in addition to the dual enrollment opportunities, which is something that I took advantage of myself as a high school student and highly value, I think Carroll has some particularly excellent programs in career and technology and some of the other opportunities that students have to be exposed to career education and workforce readiness. So that's something that we can really take a lead on as far as blueprint implementation and being a model for some other counties, which I think is really exciting. Also, the focus on diversifying teachers and leaders in the school system is something that's really important to me. I want to make sure that students see themselves reflected in the leadership and that they are hearing from people that maybe look or speak or grew up like them, which often is not the case. And then finally, the governance and accountability component is something that is really important to me as someone who's a statistician and uses evidence to make, inform my decisions in the work that I do every day. I have served on the faculty salary committee. I serve on the resource planning and advisor committee and many others at the university level. And so I get to see how strategic planning ties in with the assessment process. And so it's really important to me that we have database decisions in what we're doing. And that's something that is a pillar of the blueprint that I want to make sure is, I carry through to Carroll.
Thank you. Dr. Malbo.
So, a couple of new points perhaps I have here concerning the blueprint. Increasing the minimum salary for teachers to sixty thousand by 2026 is a tremendous move and necessary, and they deserve it, and more probably. Initiatives that bring mental, our additional mental health professionals and support staff in school can be a benefit. Initiatives that help offer students multiple tracks in high school that lead to college, technical trade, or immediate entry into the workforce. Also beneficial are the initiatives that offer pre-kindergarten services to young learners. And there will be great difficulty in assuring that all these initiatives are funded, and I commit to working alongside state and local governments, our government leaders, to find ways that we can meet many, if not all, those provisions. There are surely obstacles as well, though. The sixty-four teaching mandate presents a great concern on two fronts. First, it'll be difficult for Carroll and other school districts in Maryland to find high-qualified teachers to fill the gaps created by that mandate. And second, there's gonna be an immense cost of over twenty million dollars annually to hire additional staff and assure fair wages and benefits to those new employees. I'm concerned that our county has increased the number of, as I said before, uncertified teachers from just about one percent last year to nearly six percent. The entire state's unable to attract the number of teachers to fill every vacancy, and we could see the level of uncertified teachers in our schools reach rates of excess of twenty percent. And let's not forget, in addition, Carroll County residents, you will be paying for sixty percent of the blueprint costs. So we need to be careful of our taxpayers and where taxpayer dollars go and be, make sure that everything's accountable in terms of taxpayer dollars with the blueprint.
Thank you. We've come full circle, and we're back to Ms. Stupin, a bit questioning. Behavior issues are increasingly becoming a concern for students, parents, and staff. What steps would you take to maintain safety and the effectiveness of our schools?
Thank you very much. That's, that's a really great question about a very important topic. And this is one of those questions where it's really important to remember, what boards of education members, what are the powers they have versus what are the powers that exist at the administrative level? A lot of what can and needs to be done at this level is, is, is at the administrator level and in the school level. And so, as a board member, I certainly would take a look at relevant policies and see where we can improve things on a policy level. Board members make budget decisions, trying to make sure that there's a budget allocation for things like student, not student, but counselors that are needed to address with behavioral issues, advocating for administrator and classroom educator partnership and coming up with the plans to try to deal with behavioral issues, taking a look at discipline mechanisms. I know that we have a discipline policy, and it says only so much about how discipline actually gets addressed in schools. And then there are some other documents related to the flow of how disciplinary issues are supposed to be addressed. And I honestly find it kind of inscrutable. It doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. You can't really have good discipline without discipline in what the process is too, and making sure that it's, there's clarity behind it, everybody understands what it is. Again, this is another area, listening to educators, listening to their truth about what's happening, listening to what they advise about what is needed, about how to make it better. And then at the heart of it too, there are a variety of other specific things that, that are involved in some of the behavior issues we have to address, like the inconsistency related to cell phones in classroom and what is done when students violate those rules about not being able to be on their phone. So, using the position of a leader on the board to also just give voice to some of the changes that need to be made, even if they aren't within my power.
Thank you. Doc Schuch.
Yeah. So once again, you teed me up quite well there. And I think that in addition to using the platform of being a board member to listen, it's to really advocate, right? And so that means not just listening when employee groups come up or students or parents talk to the board about what's going on in the day-to-day, but acknowledging and then responding right away. I think, you know, there's a lot of things that can be done to support or improve behavior problems that are in our schools. School counselors is certainly one of them, having more support staff. Just extra hands in the classroom is a huge one, and it's something that the blueprint should help with. But again, there's many challenges to how that may be implemented and funded. I think additional training is always a great thing, but one of the things we have to keep in mind is that more and more training costs more and more money and more and more time. It's an extra thing on educators' plates, and something has to be taken away. And so, one of the reasons that I'm really interested to bring my research background is to think about the idea of deimplementation. So, thinking about when something is maybe no longer serving us well. And pulling in the latest evidence-based research, pulling in new programs, but also making sure that we're taking something away. And making sure that teachers aren't feeling overwhelmed by additional paperwork and new job responsibilities and roles that just increase the level of disruption in the classroom when they're trying to deal with all the minutia. I also just want to make sure that, as Mary was talking about, educators are really feeling backed up by their administration. I think administrators have a very difficult challenge with policies that are sometimes unclear and guidance that can be inconsistent from the local and state level. But making sure that when educators are making a choice in their classroom, as they are empowered and trained to do, that they are then backed up by their administration on those decisions.
Thank you. Dr. Malbo.
Yeah. Concerning behavioral issues, I support proactive measures. And I spoke about this at one of the Board of Education meetings with open microphone. That proactive measures prevent behavioral issues, physical threats. And I agree that cellphone use in school, a lot of bullying and intimidation occurs through smartphones, which can lead to physical threats. A low tolerance policy on fighting, I believe in. Commissioners have considered this and are actually trying to work in this kind of legislative- this and are actually trying to work in this kind of legislation. And I would advocate such a policy, such as Delegate Chris Tomlinson, who has a bill out HB 1400, puts things in right direction in terms of school officials examining each case of fighting that occurs and making sure that if there's punishment, that it's fair and appropriate for all the parties involved. So I think he's doing good work there. I support policies that would indemnify and protect teachers from potential legal action in situations where staff take reasonable actions to prevent injuries to themselves and students. Student mentor programs. I like what they're doing at Winters Mill High, where they have older students who are aiding younger ones and kind of giving them that mentorship so they get through. Very helpful. Parental involvement. Yes, parental involvement. A close communication between parent, teacher, and staff has to be sustained. And we all have heard and we know that students excel more when there's more parental involvement. I also support the presence of security resource officers, or SROs, in our schools. And I think to a degree also, I support the presence of counselors and behavioral health interventionists at our schools. But I want to be clear that, again, parents would need to be informed of and approve of medical decisions concerning their child. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Serber?
I see and understand that disruptive behavior by students is a large and growing problem in the modern-day classroom. The educational mission of the school is thwarted when misbehavior and disciplinary issues are allowed to grow and multiply without reliable prevention or not effectively, or without an effective remedy. As one of my strongest held beliefs and commitments, I will work tirelessly and relentlessly to advocate and work for the strongest possible preventative strategies and disciplinary remedies. See, I'm sorry, remedies available to the schools in the state of Maryland for addressing behavioral issues. With other jurisdictions almost universally struggling with this same issue, I hope to see improvements in the legislature in the 2024 session and will advocate for such changes. I also believe that our students' mental health is a big piece of the pie. I come from a family of mental health professionals. My mother and my brother are both, they both hold the highest licensure in the state of Maryland for clinical social work. So I do advocate for school counselors as well as strengthening partnerships with outside of mental health organizations. But as Greg said before, I too believe that parents should be involved in every step of the way when it comes to mental health interventions.
Thank you. Back again. No, Mrs. Chikorski. And I think you all touched on this next line of questioning, but we'll continue with it. Snapping shortages affect the academic achievement, emotional wellness, and safety of our students. What should be done to grow our own pool of educators? And how can we make education a more attractive procession for young people?
That's a good question. So you're absolutely right, that the shortages are affecting all of those different components of the school system, not just physical bodies in the building, right? So there's a number of different things. There's several pieces of legislation right now related to growing our own, whether that includes supporting instructional assistance to move up the career ladder toward becoming full-time classroom teachers, or working with our institutions of higher education, including my own, to enhance teacher training programs and really direct resources out to the local counties. I'm currently in the process of applying for a federal grant myself that would increase workforce capacity for occupational therapists serving children with severe and complex multiple disabilities in the school systems, something that we sorely lack. And so I understand and am looking at the data right now about the dramatic shortages across the state. So I think, you know, part of it is putting in place those structural supports, right? So the legislation and so forth, and making sure that those are well-funded. But then also making sure that we are creating an environment that people want to work in, making sure that folks that are here want to stay here, and people that are potentially considering working here know that they will be supported, that they will be empowered to do the work that they want to do, that they will be encouraged to have a diversity of perspectives, and that they will be reinforced by their administrators. So that comes down to making sure that we have a proper salary, proper time to do tasks, non-instructional tasks, again, extra hands in the classroom to the extent possible with support staff, and just really making this a place that people want to work and want to stay working.
Thank you. Dr. Malvo? Yeah, so it does cover some of the things earlier, as you said, with this question, but I'd like to reiterate some of those points as well and a couple new ones. First off, we're fortunate. We don't really have a big teacher shortage in Carroll County. We don't have a teacher shortage, or it's a minor teacher shortage. That's the good news. And routinely, we have one of the lowest vacancy rates compared to neighboring counties. So that's not really a major issue. We had just, again, eight vacancies two years ago and had just over 20 this past year due to, again, the good work of the Board of Education in place. It added 123 new positions with $11 million in the new blueprint funding. Yet, again, as I said before, our neighbors, neighboring counties have hundreds of vacancies. All that despite the lower salaries compared to neighbors, and we have the best benefits as well. We have a fraction of the classroom management issues, as I said, that other counties deal with in terms of discipline and disruptive classrooms. And at the same time, yes, we do have a bit of a problem, as I said, where our county went from less than 2% to now 6% of uncertified staff in just over a year, and we're hiring more folks than we would normally hire because the state cannot. Again, it doesn't have enough, a big enough job pool to pull from. So we're forced to seek new hires and hires outside of our state to meet some of the mandates that blueprint has provided and to keep those class sizes small, which I think our teachers definitely appreciate.
Ms. Serber?
Thank you. Retention begins with competitive pay for teachers and for staff. I am in favor of pay and benefit packages that are commensurate with Carroll's cost of living, offering adequate opportunities for pay increases while maintaining fiscal discipline. While more needs to be done, I prioritize school and classroom safety, addressing classroom behaviors thoughtfully and effectively, and maintainable works, maintaining workable class sizes. Carroll County has much to offer teachers and educational professionals, with many choosing CCPS for its system, for its health functionality, and for its excellence.
Thank you very much. The question references Grow Your Own in particular. And so some of the initiatives around that have to do with our education support professionals having a pathway to becoming teachers and educators themselves. And this is an area, again, where there is some pretty broadly supported legislation along those lines, as Amanda referenced. Two of those pieces of legislation, one of them is HB 0945, and that's the initial teacher certification requirements. And it has to do with providing some more flexible, but yet still robust and legitimate pathways for teacher certification. Yeah, if you haven't heard, and if this means anything to you, the practice is kind of following that in favor. There is also the Grow Your Own program. There's also other legislation that allows for starting at the community college and having a specific pathway at the community college level. And then the education support professionals have also created an ESP Bill of Rights that addresses a lot of the things that they need. And so in addition to specifically what happens with certified teachers, we also need to work to make sure that those professionals are treated as professionals, compensated as professionals, empowered as professionals, and given pathways to also have a career advancement mechanism as well.
Thank you. Okay, we're back again to Dr. Malvo. And I think you did mention cellphone use in one of your comments, but many educators have recognized the harm cellphone use is causing to our students and have recommended no cellphone policies in schools. What is your position on this issue? And how would you implement a policy that is consistent and can be enforced?
So cellphone use, again, studies have shown that with cellphone use, that academics can go down, that students use those cell phones in class and try to multitask and multi-multi-task with those phones. And it's definitely a distraction in terms of the schools. I had actually mentioned this, in fact, as at a board meeting where I discussed 20 years ago, when I would walk into my classroom to teach English, I'd walk in and it's a buzz of noise and students are talking to each other, and there's this sort of energy and excitement. And I walk in and they all look at me and, you know, I say hello, class, and they all greet me, hello, professor, you know, and there's that energy. And then fast forward to today, 20 years later, I walk in the classroom and you can probably expect what I see. And no one's talking to this person next to them. No one's talking to this person. Let me get to know her. And so the interconnectedness and the ability to grow in terms of your social, you know, just socialization is being robbed by the cell phones, and it's a big concern. And I really, I know that cell phones can bring benefit to the classroom, but I think it's far more distracting and an issue when they are in the classroom. So I would advocate not having them in the classroom at all. They do have sometimes a cellphone day on Fridays. See, this topic, it's too much. 30 seconds, I can't get through. But they need to make sure they stay in the locker. And we even gotten into cell phones being a problem in terms of bullying and intimidation and being used, you know, with social media. So it's a big issue.
Thank you. Ms. Serber?
I could not agree with Greg's point anymore. I just saw a picture on Facebook that had a group of students who were sitting inside of an art museum, I believe it was the Met, and there was a bench in the middle. And all six kids were staring down at their cell phones when you have the most amazing artwork hanging on the walls, and they're staring at their phones. I do not think that cell phones should be allowed at schools. I think they're a huge distraction in the classroom. Part of your question was how we would implement that. I think it needs to be a concentrated effort, and I think it needs to be very consistent across the schools. And I think it would also, we would need to call for parents to please help us with this because unfortunately, it is the parents sometimes who are texting and calling their students while in school. So again, I think the key takeaway is that it needs to be a concentrated effort, and we have to be consistent.
Thank you. Ms. Stupin?
Thank you. Yes, I think this is a subject on which we all pretty much agree. And it's multifaceted, right? Because the cell phones are not just a distraction in the classroom, which, and that's huge all by itself, but they are a source of so much of the bullying and so much other activity that's happening on cell phones that's harmful to kids, potentially harmful, actually harmful, sometimes seriously harmful in terms of the content that's on there and the things that happen on the phones. And, you know, screen attachment in general and the ways that we know that that's affecting the social and mental well-being of young people. And so a lot's already been said. A couple of the additional points I want to make is this isn't just a cellphone issue either. It's a device issue because people have smartwatches and people have smart earbuds, and there's, they're easy to hide. And so it goes beyond that. It goes beyond the phones. And this is an area that multifaceted isn't exactly right. Policy and practice and parent partnership, because as was mentioned, the parents are the ones that are part of why cell phones are even as ubiquitous in the schools as they are, because the parents want to be in touch. And I get it. I wanted to know what was going on with my kids all the time too, but I certainly didn't try to text them in the middle of the day. And then it also comes down to educator empowerment and letting educators be in charge of their classrooms and implement policies related to device use, either at all or not at all, or what have you, if there isn't just an outright ban at all grade levels. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chikorski?
Yes. And again, I think that everybody agrees that cell phones are a huge challenge in the classroom, and certainly Dr. Malvo and I see that ourselves in our own teaching. You know, they're a distraction, as many have said. They're a venue for bullying, for sharing inappropriate content. But it's tricky, right? So we hear very clearly from educators that this is something that they want some help with. They want us to help put in place policies that would limit or completely ban cell phones for the classroom. And that's not what we're hearing from parents, as Mary was talking about. Parents want to be able to get in touch, but they also need to understand that these cell phones are leading to increased social isolation, increased opportunities for bullying, and that there are other mechanisms for communication in emergency situations, and that there are ways to appropriately use cell phones during non-instructional time. So I absolutely support increased policies on limiting cell phones during instructional time and making sure that those are really consistent across the board. We shouldn't have one middle school that has a cellphone parking lot where students walk in and place their phones out of reach, and then others where they're allowed to keep them in their backpacks or on their desks. Students share that information on their cell phones, so they know what's going on, and they're very quick to ignore them when things are not consistent, right? So that consistency needs to be there countywide, but also each school administration needs to back up teachers if they're making policies that are specific to the classroom. I also think empowering educators, again, to set up an environment of mutual respect and focus on learning helps a lot. I'm very blessed to work primarily with graduate students. I actually don't see cellphone use in my classroom hardly at all. And that's because they know that they're there to learn, they're paying a great amount of money to do it, they want to come and engage with me in the limited time that we have. Yes, that's not the same in an elementary or middle or high school setting, but setting up that environment and encouraging educators to have those conversations with the students is super critical to this issue as well.
Thank you. Welcome down to Ms. Serber. Okay. Education, education support professionals and staffers are essential to the, for the successful operation of a school system. What would you do to ensure these professionals can obtain a living wage and are protected from job loss due to privatization?
So again, I would go back to a statement I made earlier that retention begins with competitive pay. And again, I am in favor of benefit packages, pay and packages that are commensurate with Carroll's cost of living, again, offering opportunities for pay increases while managing fiscal discipline. Again, Carroll County has much to offer, much to offer our teachers and staff as far, and as far as health, functionality, and school excellence.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Stupin?
Thank you. Yeah, so this was, touched on a little bit in one of the other questions about Grow Your Own too, because the Education Support Professionals Bill of Rights addresses a lot of these things. And there are several key components that are outlined in that. And the privatization issue, there is also some legislation right now surrounding that because, you know, one of the things that that does is help to make sure that they are able to collectively bargain and raise their voices and get better compensation, better working conditions, there's better professional pathways. And so I am on record as being supportive of that. I am on record as being against privatization in that regard. In general, I don't, I understand that we have bargaining units at all levels and for a variety of positions, and I can't say that I think that that makes sense in every case. And some people may not like that. But in the nonprofit sector, which is where I work, where you don't, you have, you either don't or you have a limited ability to generate your own revenue, and you have to be very lean and mean, you have core competency. So to me, in schools, the core competency is educating our children. That should not be privatized. Some of the other things we do, like school lunches, and we already privatize the bus service to a degree, things that are not necessarily as much the core competency and face time with students on a daily basis in active instruction may be things where there is a little bit more opportunity because it's hard to fill positions. At the National Aquarium where I work, we just recently got an outside provider related to custodial because we couldn't hire and keep enough people on staff to do what we needed to do to keep everything as clean as it needed to be. But when it comes to education support professionals, I definitely am on board with the notion that that should not be privatized.
Thank you. Dr. Chikorski?
Yes, I too am on record as supporting the Education Support Professionals Bill of Rights. I have signed it and absolutely advocate for competitive I have signed it and absolutely advocate for competitive pay and the ability to bargain and many of the components of that bill. I think that we can also be really creative in thinking about benefits and using our resources, so certainly we should be compensating everyone to the ultimate extent possible. But if that's not an option, I think that we can think about offering continuing education, offering tuition remission or reimbursement. There's a number of different ways that we can use what we have and the various skills in our county to provide additional supports for these professionals so that they want to work here, they stay here, and that they want to advance. In cases where there are federal mandates about providing certain types of services like related service professionals, OTPT, speech and so forth, we have to provide those hours to students and sometimes we truly just can't. And in those cases, I do think it's appropriate to, again, think creatively about things like telehealth services and perhaps employing folks on part-time basis, working with our educational, higher education community to try to fill some of those spaces, but the priority should be going to those folks that work and live in our community. That said, I think we should also be advocating for making sure that we have fair and appropriate compensation for the cost of living in our county. And if people can't live in our county and work in our county, that's something that we need to take a look at system-wise.
Thank you, Dr. Malvo.
We don't want our support staff to feel that they're underpaid and underappreciated. We really don't. And I fully support the general premise that our educational support professions, train's coming, my son loves trains, I get distracted with them too apparently. So our ESP partners should be fairly compensated and for their incredible efforts. I'm very thankful for the board's efforts to increase their compensation and look forward to bargaining in good faith to address current and future labor concerns. I'm very concerned about the extensive amount of labor turnover and shortage of ESP staff members in our schools. And assuring a fair and competitive wage along with benefits will help support our schools.
Thank you. Go back up to Ms. Dupin again.
Yes.
Okay. How would you support our students' freedom to read and support our school media specialists as they work with county educators to meet the needs of individual students?
Oh boy, here we go. Okay. Here we go. I do support the freedom to read. I also support the parental authority to decide that students, their students shouldn't read especially the elective choice materials, but there are mechanisms to do for that. And I want to, if anybody hasn't seen it, 60 Minutes did a really good piece this week and they were talking about Beaufort, South Carolina, where there was already in place a mechanism for parents to say, no, my child needs my permission to check anything out of the library. And yet, 97 books were challenged and they ended up putting a very long process in place with community members who served on the county and only five of the challenged titles ended up getting permanently removed. I support the book reconsideration process. It's possible. I would not want, have wanted my kids to read some of the books that were challenged and I would want the ability to have that choice, but I wouldn't want somebody to take that choice away from me. I also think that our media specialists have been under fire, what was, the way that they've been treated, the things that they've been called, the lack of respect, the lack of including them in the solution. It's what I'm saying about empowerment. The people in the schools with our kids know the most about what's going on and maybe how we can address legitimate concerns too that might come up about that. I'm going to go ahead and mention, you know, there's a lot of narrative around there that we're not supposed to call it book banning. And, oh boy, like I don't have enough time. So I will just say that the explanation some have given that book banning is only when there's no way to get a book or when you're actually burning a book, that is just the extreme end of that kind of censorship. That is not the only form of book banning. The American Library Association has had its list since 1982 and they've called it the most banned book list ever since then.
Thank you. Dr. Chikorski.
Yes, so I am also on record in support of the freedom to read and promoting curriculum and library resources that reflect diverse cultures, perspectives, and histories so that we can really have an inclusive educational environment. I support the integration of digital resources to ensure that students have access to a wide range of learning materials and help address the digital divide as well. I think that the reconsideration process is something that is vital to a democratic system and I support parents' ability to determine whether or not material is appropriate for their children and I will always defend that right. However, what I don't defend is groups saying that they are for freedom and liberty, many of whom don't have children in the school system, and somehow want to protect my children from the choices that they make along with my guidance. I think that people are welcome to choose for their own children and their families, but they're not welcome to choose for mine. And so that's something that I will be advocating for strongly. I also think that there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of red tape, additional red tape put in place for our media teachers, the addition of the new Appendix J, the additional readings related to explicit content, and just the intense monitoring is something that is not helpful, it takes a lot of extra time and takes away from their ability to provide direct service to the students. I think, again, that access to a diversity of materials is always great and I support the freedom to read and to learn in the schools.
Thank you. Dr. Malvo.
Thank you. I do not support HB 785 or SB 728 freedom to read and I'm concerned that it strips away local boards of education authority to restrict children's access to content in public schools. We elected the Board of Ed, we elected them, and so let them do their job and not have people outside the bureaucrats from Annapolis tell us, this is what you have to do, this is mandated. We put trust in our board, let's trust them to do the right thing and represent us. So I feel that, well, I agree with Senator Justin Reedy and Delegate Chris Tomlinson and Delegate April Rose to announce serious concern for the passing of the bill. And there were six books that were recently pulled that have nothing to do with race or sexual orientation, which sometimes is the crutch, but there's nothing to do with race or sexual orientation. Again, we just want graphic description of sex acts and rape and that sort of thing, not to have our children exposed or at least have parents the right to say, no, thank you. We can go on though, for sure. In my reading literature classes that I teach, I think it's important to challenge students with difficult penetrating content and I do so with my African-American literature class and others. And so that's not an issue again. Again, that's not the same thing as, again, we don't want sexually graphic materials for young children. Thirty seconds, killer. Parents should have the right to express if they want their children exposed to those things. IT has put in content restrictions forever. They've restricted full internet at school. Since we restrict students from fully reviewing the internet, is that an internet ban? And on and on. We don't have PG-13 and R-rated movies shown in school without parental permission. So what's the difference between the books and other media? That's the question. Why is it such a stickler?
Thank you. Ms. Silver.
I fully support students' ability to access materials representing multiple viewpoints and the right to be taught academic subjects from varying perspectives. And when materials are open to question, I always default to parental consent. I always default to parental consent. I do believe that the Freedom to Read Act is a further erosion of local governance and when it comes to sexually explicit material, I think the, I think that the Carroll County Education Association, the CCEA, stated it best in their local board education candidate questionnaire when they stated that the CCEA does not condone materials that are sexually gratuitous in nature. That's my stance as well.
Thank you. All right, this will be our last question. Dr. Zlofski, 850 school districts in 24 different states have adjusted their school schedules to embrace a four-day school week. Would you endorse such a plan? If so, such a plan were undergoing consideration, how would you make a decision regarding that plan?
Well, my goodness, this is not a topic I've done a lot of thinking about. I have thought about the implications of some time changes, right? So adjusting the start times, there's been a lot of attention on that and certainly some of our neighboring counties have been addressing that. So the four-day school week is not something that I've spent a lot of time thinking about or researching, so I don't know that I can give a full answer. But I guess I would start with research, which is what I do to answer any question, right? So I look to see what's being done, what are the outcomes? Are there implications for academic success, for participation in different types of extracurricular activities, what that would mean for our local workforce and childcare abilities? I think that there's, you know, a lot of working pieces. I'm always open to exploring really innovative ideas like this. I went to school for some time in Germany and they had a virtually 12-month school system and I am a fan of something like that, which I don't know how that would articulate with a four-day school week, but I think that having more consistent access to the schools and education is always a good thing. So I do think that I would worry, just as I'm talking, about some of our underserved communities that might then lose out by not having access to the schools, to food, to a safe place, and the support that they need for three full days a week. But again, I need to look a little bit more into that.
Thank you. Dr. Malvo.
I had not thought of this topic as well, so, yeah. So I would probably recommend, and I went to, for a while, a Montessori school and so it felt sort of like a four-day week because Wednesdays would be activity day. And so on Wednesdays, they would just basically say, here's the location where you need to meet. We're going to be at the Smithsonian, Washington, or, you know, we're going to the Aaron Space Museum. And so you'd have to learn how to use the metro and get yourself to that location. And so I think an activity day would be nice and that could be a nice compromise with that four-day week. Also, I think the outdoors, I'm a big believer in terms of outdoor education. I'm glad the middle schools are doing that as well. And so maybe we could have one day in the week where they need to learn some survival skills or becoming more green or becoming, you know, just more self-sufficient without all the TV and electricity, the electronics, just unplug one day. That would be nice and includes even like the laptops in the school and so forth. So I would be an advocate of it if we kind of broke things down a bit and had some creativity in that one day in the week, which, again, outdoor school or, you know, find your way towards this activity on your own and meet us by this time, you know, for exploration of this museum and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Ms. Silver.
I think this was a perfect last question. I think you caught us all off guard a little bit with this one. I have never been asked a question like this, but I appreciate it very much. Just to echo some of the things that my fellow candidates said, I am open. I'm open to that idea. I'm very open to the idea of year-round school. I grew up in a family where we, we had some sort of schoolwork going all summer long so that we did not backslide come fall. So I am open, however, I believe that we would, there would need to be a lot of data, research, make sure that it really made sense. I too would have concerns for some of our free and reduced meals students who would not have access to food necessarily on those days. So I think there might be some obstacles, but I think it's a very interesting thought and I am very open-minded.
Thank you. Ms. Dupin.
Yeah, so I'm going to echo like something each one of them said. I was caught off guard, not 100%. I know I saw a headline at some point about this, but I don't know what the argument was necessarily. But to start, like Dr. Jaskowski said, at first I thought it might have to do with start times because one of the first things that I reached out to the school system about eons ago and found out that from a budgetary perspective, we would never be able to implement is the fact that high school-age students, teenagers and their biorhythms, they really should not start school so early because they, like, almost literally cannot fall asleep early enough to get a good night's sleep in that. And it was like, with the way we have to handle buses, it just won't happen. Plus, kids have after-school curriculums, they might babysit younger siblings. There's all of these other inputs that force schools into a box that maybe they shouldn't be forced into. Year-round education, I attended a year-round school when I was in San Diego when I was growing up. It was amazing. And you don't have the learning loss over the summer when you have that. And there are a lot of things about it that are really good. So I would be all for looking at potential good ideas, like what makes it a good idea? What is the evidence? What is the due diligence you can do to find out the justification for it? What is all the stakeholder input you're going to get? What is the cost? You know, lots of references to legislation and there's always that note in there about the fiscal note, you know, what is, what is the actual cost of something? And you always have to do that cost-benefit analysis and make sure that it's something that would be worthwhile. But if the evidence showed it and stakeholders in general said, yeah, this'll work out, then I would think it would be great. But we have, we have things like starting, you know, after Labor Day because parents want that extra time off in the summer. And the tourism industry says, no, 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 we need, we need to be making money. So there's so many of these other stakeholders beyond and inputs that put economic pressure and social pressure and other pressure, but I'd certainly be very open to learning more about it and going through that due diligence process to consider it.
Well, thank you all for your thought-provoking responses to our questions. We certainly appreciate that and I'm sure you all will avail yourselves of future comments from the audience regarding that and other subjects. Let's move on to the point where we can go with closing remarks and we will start with Dr. Malvo.
First, I want to thank my lovely wife, Lisa, for being here tonight and supporting me. Thank you, my dear, my biggest fan and support. Appreciate it. And folks, Carroll County schools are the best in the state and I plan to keep it that way. I'll make sure that the school focus is on traditional curriculum while pushing for pathways for success for our students to learn a trade, again, go to college, or perhaps get that great education to enter the workforce right out of high school. I will push against state-manned curriculum and policies that fly against the values of many Carroll County families. I will ensure that there's no needless spending or taxes paid by Carroll County citizens, half of which goes towards education. Whether you have children in public school, homeschool, or private school, I should not raise your taxes nor your children. You Carroll County parents should be given a clear say in the academic, social, and medical decisions that take place with your children in school. And I appreciate the strong vote of confidence that I'm getting from Carroll County public school teachers and other educators. I'd like to note and share with you a comment directly from a Carroll County public school teacher and I'm very, just appreciative of what he said. He said, "I'm a Carroll County public school teacher. I know that the union's spending a lot of money on the slate for student success and will say that the candidates are recommended by teachers. This is not true. In my circle, there are many teachers who will support you and I have a truck waiting for your magnet with your name on it." In closing, as a father of a Carroll County public school student, a 25-year educator, an administrator, and a very active community member, I am truly proud to be a Carroll County citizen, which I treasure, and I'm asking for your vote in November. And please visit my website at gregmalvo.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Silver.
I just want to thank you again, both the Democratic Club and Mr. Harrison and of course, the library as well. I'm passionate about education, community, and public service. I ardently support family and community values as a staple for education. Keeping Carroll County among the best places in the nation to start and raise a family, prepare for, and ultimately pursue a career are my top priorities. I will always stand up for Carroll County. Thanks so much for having me out tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Dupin.
Thank you very much. We need a Board of Education that reflects our community. We need a diversity of perspectives, of ideas, of experiences. And I think that those, that is one of the strengths that I would bring if elected to the Board of Education this November. Quick side note to make sure everybody realizes that the four of us here are Quick side note to make sure everybody realizes that the four of us here are the four that are going to be on the ballot in November, and because that made the primary uncontested, it will not be on the primary ballot at all. So if anybody doesn't know that, now you do, please make sure your friends know, because they might get a little bit confused about things. But I have been fighting for our schools and fighting for educators arm-in-arm, side-by-side for over 10 years now. The Carroll County Education Association is, has almost 70% of our educators who are members, and they were all given an opportunity to vote on their endorsement. So I just, I know it's not a debate, but I have to still mention that. And one of the things that I want to reinforce is in addition to good, solid parent partnership and community partnership, being a voice on the Board of Education for educators, being that superfan is sort of a niche that I think that I would fulfill, and I've been doing it for over 10 years. I think I have a very solid track record proving that that's the case. I, so I do hope that I have your vote in November, and I hope you, Dr. Jaskowski has it as well. I mentioned we formed a slate, the website is theslate4studentsuccess@gmail.com, and you can find a questionnaire so we can hear from you about your thoughts about the school system, your concerns, your needs, your ideas. You can sign up to volunteer there, you can sign up for signs, even though it's way too early for signs, so you can go ahead and sign up, and we'll get back to you when it is time for signs. But thank you so much to everyone involved in this tonight, and thank you so much, all of you who came too, because this is an amazing turnout. This shows how much Carroll County cares about its schools and its community and its kids.
Thank you. Dr. Jaskowski.
All right, thank you again to the Carroll Democratic Club and Carroll County Public Library for hosting us this evening. As we draw this conversation to a close, I want to emphasize that it is your voice, your concerns, and your aspirations for our schools that fuel my commitment to this campaign. I am immensely proud to have the endorsement of our local educators and school employee organizations. Their backing is evidence of our common goal of creating an educational system that values effective leadership and the success of every student. As you've heard this evening, my extensive background as an educator, occupational therapist, and active community member positions me as a candidate with a deep understanding of education systems, special education, and community engagement. Professionally and in my service roles, I've demonstrated the ability to lead, make impactful decisions, and collaborate effectively. My campaign is distinguished by these attributes, as well as a clear, evidence-based approach to education. I will use research and data to inform decisions and develop rational, effective solutions to current challenges. If only one voice is represented, then we are doing disservice to our students, and having a range of perspectives is the purpose of leadership by committee. Listening to truly understand and to respond with actions that reflect our community's needs is at the heart of my campaign. I'm here not just to speak, but to hear, to learn, and to collaborate with each of you for the betterment of our schools. I will also work to convince voters and local officials that a fully funded and strategic school budget is in the public interest. I will lead with integrity and work to improve learning and working conditions throughout the school system. I invite you to visit the Slate for Student Success website to learn more about me and my incredible running mate, Mary Dupin. I also encourage you to share your thoughts through our community questionnaire. I do believe that we can shape a future for our schools that you can all be proud of, and one in which every student thrives and every voice is heard. So thank you again for your support, for your engagement tonight, and your belief in our campaign.
Thank you. On behalf of the Carroll County Democratic Club, I want to thank the candidates for agreeing to appear with us today. We want to thank our studio audience for participating and for those questions that were submitted by you all. We also want to thank the library system for allowing us to use this wonderful space. As a former chairman of the board for the Community Media Center, we want to thank the Community Media Center for keeping us informed. I say goodnight and drive safely.